Thank you for letting us be here tonight and represent the town and make the choices that need to be made for the town. Just ask that you give us the wisdom and, you know, make sure that we listen and make the right choices for moving us forward this year. I also ask that you keep our first responders in your heart and also, you know, obviously the world's having some difficulty. If you would, you know, put your hand on that in these things, I pray. Amen.
We'll see if anybody signed up for public comments. If you didn't want to, and you wanted to speak. Uh, let's see, because we do not have any public hearings tonight, so if you wanted to speak on any subject, now's the time, so, uh...
Representing us, isn't it?
Oh, no.
There he is.
Oh.
He just said, "Do you want to speak?" Right on time.
Do I have to sign up for that?
Do that later. Come on up, David.
You later? Okay.
How was Africa?
Africa was amazing.
Okay.
It was awesome. I could tell you a thousand stories, but I won't. But hey, so, the reason I'm here tonight is just to, first of all, thank you guys for the time, just to sort of say hello. On Saturday when I left, I left, sort of gave you guys a lot of information of kind of what it is we were proposing and the ideas that we believe are a great match for the city and for us. And so I came tonight to basically just sort of say, if you had any questions over the last two weeks that you've come up with and you want to ask anything, I'd do my best to my ability to answer those questions. If you don't have any questions, then I would just tell you that, you know, I believe that what it is we're proposing is a great idea. I think it's something that'd be wonderful for our community, wonderful for our church, but also really wonderful for the city and for the long-term vision of what is you're trying to accomplish and I think what we want to accomplish as well, which is to bring people to this place. Any questions?
Well, we gave them the proposal, the brokers, and they can give us some feedback. And so we're looking forward to hearing what they have to say.
Cool beans. All right, and that's in the near future, hopefully. Amen. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
About, uh...
Two hours from now.
Two hours. Hey, man, that's good. Good, good, good. All right, is there anything else you need from me? All right, great. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, David. All right, we got our consent agenda with the minutes of 2:05, our special meeting, 2:12 and 2:24, the special, any changes in those minutes?
Move approval of the consent items.
All right, motion by Mr. Richardson. Second by Mr. Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
The consent agenda passes. All right, report from the mayor. Just, we opened up the, Eunice and her team opened up the park this week and Mayor Pro Tim Shoal and Mr. Ayers were there, and so a lot of kids and had a great time. And so that award-winning park will keep winning awards, I would imagine. So, thank you to Eunice and her team. So if you haven't gone over and seen the addition to our park, please take your kids, grandkids, over there. All righty, Mr. Hall, Graham, you got anything for us?
No, Mayor.
Yeah? Lori?
Um, well, I went to the historical, historic committee meeting and you probably all know about the Divide Golf Course. It's going to be dedication on April 8th, just before our meeting. But one of my concerns, they were talking, telling me about all the historic places around town, and the Rock Store, which is a tiny parcel, is on Monroe Road, and I'm wondering what's going to happen to that because, you know, it's got no, nowhere to go.
It's designated as a historical site.
It's protected.
It's protected with the state? Because it's a Union County historic.
It's a federal designation, so it's protected by...
It's federal?
Yeah.
Because the historic committee told me it was Union County.
DOT is not going to make a move.
So they're going to widen, 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 and then just go right past it? Okay, good.
I actually had this conversation, literally, like, an hour ago, because that's where I ate dinner.
There'll be a, the, the limited access. There won't be a left turn in. You have to go up, make a big bowl bout to come around. I can show you the plans. I have it somewhere. As Alex does as well.
Yeah, they don't need to worry about it.
It doesn't take any right of way.
That's it.
All right. Mr. Ayers?
Uh, no, sir. Nothing for me.
All right, Mr. Shoal?
Um, you covered the park opening, so nothing new for me.
All right, Mr. Richardson?
Just real, yeah, just real quick. Most of you saw an email from Alex that just detailed a conversation I had with Deborah Edwards at Steel Point. She's the new president of the Union West Business Association, or the business park that we all have as part of our top priorities for the next several years. She was elected in January. Another gentleman was elected vice president, so there's some new life and energy there. The roads continue to be the problem. State roads will be half the park, private roads are the other half of the park. So there'll be some conversation. I would love you all to be a part of that over the next six months to a year to figure out how to bring those roads up to standard, accept them by the town, however, in return for funding partnership and annexation of all those parcels into the town forever. So more to come on that.
All right. Thank you, Brad. Hey, Alex, what you got? You got anything for us tonight?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We've just got one staff report tonight. Ms. Donley, can you give us some exciting news?
Good afternoon, council. First off, just want to thank you guys that made it to the playground grand opening. And if you couldn't be there, I just thank you too for your support and for putting the money in the parks. That playground really is awesome and those kids absolutely love it. I mean, if you drive by on the weekend, it is like ants on an anthill out there. So it really is awesome. But long overdue, the Greenway is finally ready to make the big grand opening, so I'm proposing that we do that on Monday, March 25th. So it'd be at 6:00 PM, right before you guys already have to be out this way for the council meeting. And what we're going to do is we're working with our contractor to do a final sweep of it the week before. So all that means is they're going to go down, make it look really nice, really pretty, mow it on the sides, and just get it looking exactly like how it should be pristine condition. And it gives our guys a chance to go out and make sure there's no trash out there, pick everything up, as well as open it right before Easter and Union County spring break. So I just wanted to see if you guys were opposed, you're ready for that?
Ready for it. Wait a minute, so the grand opening would be here?
It would be Monday, March 25th, at the Greenway. You guys would physically cut a ribbon on it. We'd celebrate, have a tent, some giveaways, and then probably an informational board so the community is not confused about the ending of the Greenway and how we're going to eventually connect to Idewon Market.
The way it made it sound, it's like...
Sorry. Unless you want to open it here. Yeah. No, I apologize. No, we'll open it down there and then...
6:00 PM?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All righty.
Does that work for everybody?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, awesome. I'm excited to write that up. Thank you, guys.
All right.
Somebody asked me, was that a CD of music you were playing out there? Or a personal set? Somebody asked me if the music was available.
Oh, if it's available, it is a Spotify PG Stallings Municipal Park playlist.
There you go. For everybody that can hear that.
Oh, glad everyone loves it.
All right, any other department have a report? Chief or Kevin? All right. And Melanie, you got anything other than the, on the agenda? Okay. Well, I'll move through our agenda approval. Any additions, deletions, changes? If not, can I get a motion to approve it as is written?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers. Second by Mr. Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's have it. All righty, well, first up is the Canine Lily Memorial from Chief Franks.
So, I want to talk about the Canine Memorial. As most, as all of you know, Canine Lily was the town's first canine. She was in service from 2018 till she passed away in 2000, 2024. As you, as you all know, she was diagnosed with cancer, made a valiant fight, but had to be put down in January. These are just some of her program successes while she was a handler, and I know I've talked to you about that before. Currently Detective Smith is in the process of handpicking another dog to replace her. But what we want to do, since she was the first dog, we want to do a small memorial stone, and that's the actual rendering from the vendor. It's only four inches tall, 24 inches wide, 12 inches tall, 12 inches deep. What I was wanting to do is, and again, only because it was the first canine for the town, we wouldn't do this after, you know, for other dogs. But I wanted to get the council's approval to place this stone at that small garden walking into Town Hall Police Department. I think, believe there used to be a park bench there, but we just wanted to put that stone in the garden, in the mulch there. She's not buried there. It's just a memorial stone. I just want to make that very clear. But again, because we're putting this at Town Hall, I want to get council's approval on whether you would allow us to put that stone there or not.
Well, I think it's a great idea. So can I get a motion from someone to approve this?
I make a motion to approve the Canine Lily Memorial.
Motion by Mr. Ayers. Second by Mr. Shoal. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's have it. Now, remind me, when she was named, was it somebody from the elementary school?
That was Luna.
That was, oh, that was the second dog.
Lily was before I got here. I'm not sure how her name came about.
I'm trying to remember.
But, yeah, Luna was chosen by the children at Stallings Elementary.
Yeah, you don't happen to remember, do you? Yeah, me neither. Well, thank you for doing that.
All right, thank you.
Is there a GoFundMe or how are we paying? How's it being paid for? Don't mind my asking.
We'll be using money out of the department's budget. That's allotted for the Canine program.
Yeah, she recovered a little bit more than the cost of the plaque, didn't she?
She certainly did. Yes, sir.
No, I was just curious. I didn't know if there was like a GoFundMe. Good going.
And the next canine will be later this year, you think?
Hopefully late spring.
Late spring? Okay, so...
April, he's going to go with, pick out a dog that meshes with him.
Okay, great. That's great.
All right, thank you, Chief. Next up is our 2024 committee reappointments, and you got the list there for the planning board, Board of Adjustment, Robert Kohler, Historical Committee Jill Reed and Debbie Wagenhauser, and then the Community Committee, Mark Ledem. So, with their expiration dates there, so can I get, is any discussion on these volunteers?
I make a motion if we're ready that we approve this list of volunteers for their new expiration dates as submitted in the agenda.
All right, motion by Mr. Shoal.
Second.
Second by Lori. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's have it. Thank you. All righty, Kevin, Stormwater Infrastructure Committee.
Sir, thank you. So, here tonight to follow up from a council initiative to have staff really take a look at all the committees that we have and assess them. And so the engineering staff, we, we looked at the two engineering-related committees, that being the Transportation Advisory Committee and the Stormwater Advisory Committee, and took a look at them and just assessment overall of how they're functioning and things, things like that. And so what we noticed was that during these, during these meetings, a lot of these infrastructure-related items kind of lead to the same discussions. So whereas, say we're at a TAC meeting and we're discussing transportation, whether that be roadways, sidewalks, things of that nature, it seems to let, lead into additional discussions associated with, you know, utilities, other, other types of town-related infrastructure, stormwater as well. And similar scenario is what we were seeing in SWAC meetings too. So stormwater discussions would turn into topics about roadway and other utilities as well, sanitary sewer issues and, and things of that nature. So we saw a lot of similarities in both these committees. And given that information, staff believes this is a good opportunity to kind of follow in the footsteps of the Community Committee and really restructure both of these, both of these committees, both the TAC and the SWAC, and essentially just combine them into a Stormwater and Infrastructure Committee. And so really proposing more volunteering efforts to really reach out to, for more public involvement, and the stormwater piece helps us meet our state permitted MS4 permit. So really killing multiple birds with, with one stone here. As, as it stands, staff is proposing that the SIC is what, is what we're proposing to call it, meets quarterly, but we can add additional meetings as needed if so determined. And so ultimately, staff is requesting council approval of the ordinance and establishing the Stormwater and Infrastructure Committee, and then also requesting council to dedicate up to two council, council members to act as members of the Stormwater and Infrastructure Committee. So happy to take any feedback on the ordinance itself. Any questions?
Yeah, as Kevin said, it's two council members and five citizens. The citizens, this is a citizen-led committee, so the citizens will be the chair and the vice chair. And any questions for Kevin on this or Alex?
I know, how many people are on the committee now? The two committees?
So, how many active members?
Well, yeah.
So there's, there's one active member on the Transportation Committee, and there's two active members on the Stormwater Committee, but I don't believe one is seeking reappointment for the Stormwater Committee. So we'll really, at the end of March, we'll have one on each.
Three vacancies in?
Correct.
One, one thing that, and talk to Alex, I mean, are we going to have well-defined kind of what this committee is about? Because I think even with stormwater, I know when we get together, it's mostly a, specifically just us taking and talking about what projects are going on and timetables and things like that there. So I, I kind of sometimes feel like it's been hard to get traction with some of these just because it doesn't feel like there was a firm set of goals for some of the committees. So, and I've seen a little bit, and I've talked to Alex, so, I mean, is that kind of part of resetting, if you will, for...
Essentially, and I know, and I don't disagree with you, because I think, and I think COVID was not a, a good factor with, with all of that as well. So, yeah, really, I, I do think we'd better define kind of roles and responsibilities, the purpose of each committee. I really have it broken down into two pieces, the stormwater piece of it, meeting our public involvement piece for that MS4 permit. I really want to, I would really like to get the citizens involved volunteering at Stallings Fest. If y'all remember, I had a stormwater booth there at Stallings Fest, so I'd love to get some citizen involvement in those pieces as well. And really help guide any policy recommendations that, from a citizen's standpoint, to council as well. So, and then similar situation for just the general town infrastructure. Obviously, we don't have the state permit requirement for, for that piece of it, but there's still transportation planning efforts, the issues that we're seeing with the sanitary sewer and things of that nature, really more citizen involvement in those pieces.
I'm on the Stormwater Committee, so I'd be okay being one of the liaisons for that. I know there's got to be two.
Well, thank you. Any other questions for Kevin? Well, it's a pleasure to counsel then.
Go ahead, Steve. I'll second it.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to support adopting the ordinance that combines the Stormwater and Infrastructure Committee, or sorry, the Stormwater Advisory and the Transportation Advisory Committees into the Stormwater and Infrastructure Committee. Second.
All right, yeah, we have the amendment there. I'm not going to read it because Kevin went over most of it and we highlighted the, the membership and the officers down there. So, so we have a motion to approve the amendment to the ordinance to establish and restructure the boards and committees for the town of Stallings, establishing the Stormwater and Infrastructure Committee. Motion by Mr. Ayers. Second by Mr. Richardson. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's have it. All right, thank you, Kevin.
Mayor, do you want to, do we want to go ahead and appoint the two council members to serve on the committee?
All right. So we got one.
Taylor, right.
I'll do it. Because I don't think we've, we've only met once. Yeah, yeah, so...
And Mr. Hall.
Yes, ma'am.
All righty. So Kevin, still up? The resurfacing program update?
Sir, thank you. So, Mayor Pro Tim Shoal, I'm glad you asked that question during the, the budget, the budget meeting, because that was a good preface for, for this item on the agenda tonight. So really coming in front of council tonight as a follow-up from the FY 2024 budget discussions, this fiscal year's budget discussions were specifically the resurfacing funding. Because if y'all recall, council approved a $1.05 million budget at, at the time of FY 2024, and it was understood that the recommendation to meet council's goal of a 70 or more PCI pavement condition index value for all of the town roadways, infrastructure, that staff's projections and recommendations were that we needed to spend about $1.25 million a year. However, at the time of these FY 24 budget discussions, we saw a massive spike in inflation and, and cost for resurfacing. So council's philosophy was really, all right, let's, let's approve $1.05 million and then have staff come back at a later time in FY 24 and, and see if we want to appropriate an additional $200,000 towards that program. And so, well, let me just take a step back real quick, and we currently have a reconstruction contract executed at the moment for approximately $730,000. And when I say reconstructive, I mean patching, milling and overlaying, and things of that nature where we're removing existing pavement, pavement sections and replacing those with stuff that asphalt roadway, that meets our standards. And then we, we still plan, staff still plans on implementing a preventative maintenance contract as well, and we can fit that within this $1.05 million budget. However, if we were to obtain that additional $200,000, we can get several, several more sections in, in Shanamara, along Limerick Drive here, and then we would also be able to add about three-quarters of a mile for preventative maintenance as well with that additional $200,000. So I would take $150,000, apply it towards additional reconstructive methods, and take $50,000, and apply it towards additional preventative maintenance. And so with that, we're requesting council to approve that $200,000 additional appropriation towards our FY 24 resurfacing program. Happy to take any questions and open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions?
What's the red?
Yeah, sorry, I have a legend up here that... So the red section is a piece that we recently completed, and the purple is in our existing contract out there, so the green segments would be the additions.
Do we get any cost savings out of doing it all at once versus piecemeal? Like, if we did not do the green right now and put it off till later?
We do. Mobilization's a big, a big key in these resurfacing contracts, and so that's ultimately why we selected these roads, because they are, aren't in the best condition and they're, they're highly trafficked. These are collector streets for a majority of Shanamara, or the west side of Shanamara. And since we were already going to be out there doing the purple segment of Limerick, then it's, it does cost save.
Kevin, explain, for the people listening at home or who listen to this, explain the formula. You know, I'm sure people are thinking, well, the roads in Shanamara aren't that old compared to other parts of, on this side of Stallings, but everything's done based on a formula, based on the, the condition of the road, and it doesn't have to do anything with the age. It's all based on a formula. It's not, not a subjective decision.
No, there, there is, there is a science to it. Granted, as, as just discussed, mobilization's a factor that you take, take into consideration when formulating these contracts, but yes, pavement condition is the biggest driver of how roads are selected. And so the depths vary depending, and, and the reconstructive techniques vary, but ultimately the formula also states or dictates that it, maybe it doesn't necessarily make sense to, there, we have a, we have a roadway that's complete failure. Granted, there's no safety issues. It's just very, very, and in very, very poor condition. However, it's drivable. Replacing all of that would eat up a majority of our resurfacing budget for that year. So it makes sense to spend that money on roadways that aren't necessarily as, don't need that complete reconstruction. It helps us prolong the, our roadway life, prolong our dollars, and really look at spending the money in these areas because we know that the, the horrible, the complete failures, those aren't getting any worse. So it makes sense to make these repairs now to save us money in the long run.
And the other comment I'll make that I've learned since I've been on council is, obviously Shanamara was built before Stallings was incorporated, and the county did a poor job of managing the condition of the construction of these roads as well as other neighborhoods, but so appreciate it, Kevin.
Thank you.
Any other questions for him?
Where, where is the 200 grand coming from?
It, it would need to come from reserves. If the board chose to move forward, it would need to be allocated from reserves. So if the board said, yes, we, we want to allocate this money, staff will come back with a budget amendment for the board to consider for approval.
Okay, I, I got you. This is just for informational. We'll come back with the budget amendment. I got you.
No, this is, this is, so the, the reason we're here is because during the budget process, about a year ago roughly, the council said, of the 1.25 we're projecting we need, we'll budget 1.05 million, leave in an additional $200,000. So the board wanted to see what was happening with inflation, just kind of see where we're at budget-wise, and they said, staff, bring this back to us in a year, and the council would decide whether to add an additional $200,000 back to the budget in order to do additional road maintenance. So it's, it's for consideration tonight. Of course, the board doesn't have to make a decision on it, although I think Mr. Parker would probably say, you know, he's trying to get the, the contract together, so it'd be helpful if we got a decision from the board tonight whether to proceed so that he can plan and move forward, because this is a, a smaller piece of a bigger project with road maintenance that we would like to move forward on. I think if we waited, we'd just probably delay everything.
All right, discussion on council? So as you said, this come out of our fund balance savings account.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll make a motion. I was, I asked some questions earlier today about this particular section and felt really satisfied with their answers about mobilization and traffic in Shanamara. We've got some issues on our side of town, the southern end, roads probably like this with less traffic, and so I'm comfortable with this allocation, knowing that we, so I'm okay to make the motion to approve an additional 200,000 for the resurfacing budget.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Richardson. Second by Mr. Shoal. Any further discussion? All right, and so we have a motion to approve the funding. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's have it. Unanimous? All right, thank you all. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, Chief Franks, ordinance establishing an appeals process for parking citations? This request didn't come from a council member, did it?
No, sir. He just turned around and gave me another citation.
Good evening again. I'm sure you all remember in December of '23, council approved some amendments to our parking ordinance. The last parking citation that had been created was years and years ago. So as we were going through developing an updated parking citation, we discovered we didn't really have a, a simple method to appeal a parking citation. Currently, the way town ordinance reads, everything can be appealed through the Board of Adjustments. And conversation with the manager, we were like, that's not really a practical method to appeal a $25 parking ticket. So in February of '24, the town attorney reviewed the language that we put forward for an appeal process and approved that language after a few back-and-forth emails. Without?
I'm sorry, what was that? Did you speak up on that last part?
No, I don't remember what I said. I apologize. It was a very good conversation. To simplify this, we wanted this to be as simple as possible. It'll be a one-step appeal process. The administrative service manager of the police department will be, be the appeal officer. People that receive a parking citation will have seven days to appeal. It'll be with a written, in the form of writing. We've already generated a form on our website. It still says it's under construction until all this is approved. They'll be able to print it out, mail it in, or bring it in, or send it in via email. They'll have seven days, and then a decision will be rendered shortly thereafter. And just one, the last piece of that ordinance was, we wanted to make a reason, there are some things that are just, they won't even be considered for an appeal. Lack of knowledge of the town's parking regulations, conflicts, tardiness, going to or returning from a destination, and inability to find a valid parking spot. It's very similar to state statute where you don't get to violate the law because you were ignorant of the law. But anyway, carrying on, I request council to approve the parking appeal ordinance, and I'll back that up if any of you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Chief?
Have we had a lot of appeals or?
Well, we, quite honestly, we, you passed that ordinance in December. We've not completed the, the parking ticket yet, just because we wanted to put the appeal process on the ticket. So it's ready to go to the printer as soon as we get this, this, this ordinance approved.
Can you give me an example of legitimate grounds?
Let's say someone's written a, a city or town parking ticket for parking a handicap space. They forgot to put their hang tag up in the window. They can prove they have a hang tag. You know, there's, there would be others, you know, parking in no parking zone. They say, I wasn't parked there. And if there's photographic evidence saying, oh, I was, I was 15 feet outside the parking zone rather than in the parking, no parking zone, if that makes sense. But there always are some legitimate grounds for appeal.
But, but like in Shanamara, the HOA has parking regulations. Y'all don't involved in those?
We do not get, yeah, HOAs can have their own set of rules, but the police are not held to the HOA rules. It's what either state law or town ordinance says. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Chief? Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we request the parking, we adopt the parking appeal ordinance from Franks.
All right, motion by Laurie to approve the ordinance, meaning a code of ordinances, Title VII.
I'll second.
Chapter 70. And so, motion by Laurie, seconded by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it. Thank you. All right, Melanie, occupancy tax process. Road might be blocked when we go on.
Well, I know this is a long time coming, at least for the mayor. It's probably been 11 or 12 years you've been pushing for this.
Especially, I want everybody to know how much I hate taxing. But this is not a tax on the citizens of Stallings.
No, and what's interesting is, it's not the Town of Stallings who would be adopting this occupancy tax. It is actually Stallings District X, S. So all of you are not only Stallings Town Council members, but you are Stallings District S members. And that can, it's a taxing unit and consists of all of Stallings that's in Union County. So just that few streets that are in Mecklenburg County are not part of Stallings District S. So all of the notices that we send out and everything won't be Town of Stallings adopts this. It'll be the Town of Stallings District S. So in order to hold a referendum, the first thing that you all will have to do is adopt a resolution instructing the, or requesting that the Board of Elections hold a referendum. They need that by August in order to put it on the November ballot. There is no cost for that whatsoever. And the good thing is, the statute has the exact language as it needs to appear on the ballot. So we know exactly what it's going to say. You know, whether individuals are for and, or against the hotel occupancy tax. If they're for, then you all can decide a percentage up to 5%. And that just goes for any properties that currently pay sales tax would also then pay this occupancy tax. They're typically applied to lodging properties, including hotels, bed and breakfast, cabins, condominiums, rental homes for short-term stays, including Airbnbs, VRBOs. They are not usually applied to religious conference centers, colleges and universities, campgrounds, and RV parks, because they don't typically pay the sales tax. Assuming the resolution passes, then you have to come back, and Stallings District S will also adopt another resolution, providing 10 days' public notice of your intent to levy this tax. And then the next step is, along with that, is creating a Stallings District S Tourism Development Authority. Because all of these funds, you can't just, you know, put them in the general fund or use them for roads. They have to be specifically for tourism-related activities.
What would that fund, what would we be able to use it for?
Okay, so what you can use it for is the net proceeds, which is the gross proceeds less the cost to administer the tax as determined by the finance officer. And that's not to exceed 3% of the first $500,000 of gross proceeds, and not 1% of the remaining gross proceeds collected each year, is to promote travel and tourism. That's to advertise market and area activity, publish and distribute pamphlets and other materials, conduct market research, engage in promotional activities that attract tourists or business travelers to the area. And it does include administrative expenses incurred for engaging in these activities. For tourism-related expenditures that are, are, those are designed to increase the use of lodging facilities, meeting facilities, convention facilities in a city or county, trying to attract business and other tourists to the town. So every quarter, the proceeds must be sent to the Stallings District S, who then will give it to the Town of Stallings. Two-thirds of the funds are to promote travel and tourism, and the remainder for tourism-related expenditures. And at the same time, you adopt the resolution and you develop this authority, you will have to appoint the members. One-third of the members must be affiliated with businesses that collect taxes in the town. So, you know, someone who works for a hotel, one-half the members shall be in, individuals who are active in the promotion of travel and tourism in the town. The finance officer has to be the finance officer for the authority. And you all, as the town council, must designate the chair.
Is there a minimum amount of people who have to be on the authority?
No. So let me see. No, just as long as they match that one-half, one-third.
They have at least four, or three.
Three.
So once we do this, if we do this, um, sorry, we don't have, we're not, we don't report to Union County for anything. Collect them and, do they collect them and then give them to Stallings?
Well, Union County does collect our taxes now, correct? Yeah, so we're going to have to figure out, I assume then, maybe they, they will continue to collect them and then give them to the tourism authority, since they collect our taxes already. They can, they can collect an additional, they can ask for 1%. Under the bill, there were a number of towns that got the same ability to hold a referendum and see if this passes. Indian Trail, Stallings, Union County can do, you can do up to 6%. There's some special legislation for a few other towns that have more than that. Mecklenburg does 2%. It has something to do with the NASCAR Hall of Fame. So they got some special legislation for that. But typically statewide, 6 is the max, with one from the county and five from municipalities.
We can all, we can, the timing is, we can all have all this done by November?
Absolutely. Yeah, at the next meeting, I'll bring the resolution to you.
So is that the next step?
Yes.
Look at the resolution and?
Yes.
All right.
Assumed everyone wants to proceed, I?
Any other information?
No, sir.
All right. Any other questions for Melanie? You need a motion?
Just, if you just nodded the head to tell me to draft the resolution. Okay, I'll do it.
All right. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Estimated revenue, I mean, we're not going to get rich off of this like we would with a PBC board. But I would figure 60 to 80,000 is what my goal, what number was, when I did my quick math years ago. So, but every little bit helps. All righty, next up, continued budget discussions if necessary. Alex, do you need any further discussion?
Yes, sir. I feel like I've got good direction unless there's anything else we need to talk about.
All right. Anybody else have any points they want to further discuss right now? All right, thank you, Alex. All right, and then Alex, the 2024 council priorities and action strategies. He summarized it up for us there. Do you want to go over it, Alex? Or what do you want to do?
Happy to, if helpful. Happy to, if everybody feels like they have a good understanding. There were a couple of very minor, non-substantive tweaks that were suggested.
What were those?
So if we go, let's see. Thank you to Mr. Shong for getting us a long range mouse. This is much smoother. Was explore municipal service district. So that was suggested to just explore funding mechanisms.
Number three? Three what? Three?
That would be number three, A3. And it would change the word, A Municipal Service District, to Explore Funding Mechanisms. And then, it's actually the one below that room, numero four. Instead of task, it would be encourage.
All right.
Happy to go over it, if helpful. If everybody feels like they have a good understanding and are in agreement with the priorities, happy to stand down.
Yep. Thank you, Alex. It was a pleasure at the council. Anybody need a summary? All right, I guess we're good. Thank you, Alex, for all the work on this. Kurt, thank you for your help as well.
Mr. Mayor, could we get a vote to approve this, please?
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve the council, 2024 council priorities and action strategies?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shaw, seconded by Mr. Ayers there. And all in favor?
Aye.
As have it. All right, thank you. All right, can I get a motion to go into closed session pursuant to 143-318.11a4?
So moved.
Motion by Laurie?
Second.
Second by Graham.
Can I ask a question?
We need to invite anyone.
Sure. Oh, Matthew?
We may need to reschedule.
Okay. Yeah, we're way ahead of, of. Yeah, why don't we?
Would you like me to maybe walk through this if, if we want to wait? Or we could reschedule the meeting?
Well, can we just suspend the meeting for about 10, 15 minutes while you call him and see if he's close by? How do we do that?
Brief recess.
I make, just call a brief recess? All right, we have a brief recess, 10, 15 minutes, and we'll try to get in touch with our broker.
Close session and then adjournment after that?
Yeah.
Focus on the audience, trying to figure out whether they want to stick around.
The closed session, right? Yeah, there you go.
He's here.
Oh, he's here. There we go.
It's too late now. You already made it.
We're going to get everybody out.
Bye, Kurt. Thank you, buddy.
Thank you, Kurt.
Have a good one.
This is the letter Marshall was talking about.
You guys going to put the district service, you know, on your resume? Or the, what is it, the district?
District three.
Resume, top of the resume.
Oh, District S.
Yeah, District S.
Service District S. Yeah, one more, one more resume bullet.
I did what my five-year-old does. He can't understand the difference between S and three.
Good timing, guys.
Hey, guys.
Read your mind.
Oh, right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We just build into every minute, notice we do. I could see it just slipping up.
I know. You have to turn it. It's like a screw. So you hold the door open a little bit, and then that, yeah. And then take it out, if that makes sense.
If you're interested, these are hard to read, but it does help. There's like a ton of them about this project. Like you always, there are like 20 sheets. And you just, you know sheet 10 is where the next one.
I would do it, but I can't reach it. I'm too short.
That's the rock store.
We will need to close it, though.
Walk, yeah, pops back, but.
Aaron.
This is coming up in road route. You won't be able to turn left into it, but you go down, hit this little lane right here. And if I go to sheet 10?
Dog chasing the car, and we finally got it.
This way, you just turn in right here. It's going to be limited access. I don't love it, but it's not bad.
Kevin will get it.
All right, I feel, I feel like it's stuck, you know?
Pull it down at all? And then turn it?
No.
Brained it across the, about 30 yards and tucked it and then built around it.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Yeah, it'd be cool to pick this up.
That's what I wanted to do.
Oh, yeah.
Carolyn's up.
They enjoy being on TV over at Indy, right? I'm pretty sure whatever you had, whatever you had on your plate there, I don't, I didn't, I didn't look closely, but if you ever pulled something out, you could probably get up to the screen and read it.
Who opened it?
Yeah.
Or you're writing notes or whatever.
Thank you.
I want to know who like opened it.
Brad.
I have superhuman strength.
One time, we were sitting around in a conference room.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to sit in that spot.
TVs that weren't used, big flat screens.
We need one of those in this conference room. Well, she came back.
Signature?
I had my Swiss Army knife on me. I went up there, took it down, and went in the conference room. And she's like, where did that TV come from?
Primetime TV.
I was like, you said move it. She doesn't realize it either. Realize that you were actually going to do it. And you shouldn't have said, we need to move it. Bank of America?
Oh, wow.
I've watched Netflix, David's watching all these meetings.
I did.
See, see the one?
Indian Trail is so amusing. It's like...
I should watch them, I guess.
It was kind of fun.
On YouTube, they have some, just funny, I don't know if you've seen it, there's a rabbit hole. If you get caught in that, it's like all these ridiculous town council meetings.
Dalton, the Dalton mayor. You got to look up the Dalton, Illinois mayor right now. Super mayor, she calls herself, and she is in trouble with FBI.
Alrighty.
I love her.